I'd like to call this meeting a board of selectmen meeting today, August 31st, 2020. We could all just begin with the pleasure of allegiance.
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had an opportunity to look at the manifests?
Mm-hmm.
Any comments, questions, or any?
I didn't have any issues with it.
Take a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifest up to August 24th, 2020, and the payroll manifest up to August 25th, 2020.
Well, wait a second. It was, the agenda says August 31st and September 1.
Well, I'm reading what I got.
Go with what you have.
Okay. I'll second then.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous?
What were the dates that you wanted on these? It was accounts payable August 24th and payroll manifest August 25th.
Okay. Everybody had an opportunity to look those over?
Yeah, I looked them over. I didn't have any issues with it.
Okay, if everybody's good with them, motion.
Take a motion, we approve the minutes from 8:10, 20, as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. So, reports from assigned boards, budget meeting on October 1st. Did I read that right? Okay. Planning board?
Planning board. We had a meeting at 26. Development on Mitchell Road, a hearing been pushed to the second week of September. And then we had case 1900, Route 4, Dumas developers. They've extended there for 90 days. And they'll be back, I believe, on December 11th, 2020. And that was about it.
Okay. CIP?
Nothing yet.
300th?
Hey, just a question on the CIP. So, I mean, we're going to talk about the new schedule, given SB2, but does that also, I assume that's going to impact our CIP process too?
Yeah, we've asked for submissions from the departments at the school in time and we can meet later, that's later September, so.
Okay.
As long as we don't have six meetings, we probably can get it done before the budget gets completed.
Good.
School said they could do it, and I hope they could do it in that time, but I expect a few weeks, a few updates.
Okay.
Okay, 300th?
300th, I'm waiting for the first Zoom meetings coming up here pretty soon. But I do know that they talked to Chris about the cookbook. That's all squared away, so.
Yeah, you had given them the okay to spend 1,200 bucks on cookbooks, and the cookbook ended up being longer than expected, so they need something more like 1,600. And I said, yeah, go ahead, I want their numbers.
It went from 100 pages to 170 pages.
Wow.
Ooh, that's, yeah.
Depending on the cover they use, it's, but their breakevens are around 100, 110 bucks. See that again for that.
That's fine.
So, go right ahead.
Okay, Marston?
I have nothing. How has the rain helped the fields?
I haven't been by, and not since the good rains.
Yeah, I haven't either. I gotta get out there.
Doesn't look too good right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on Thursday.
Not enough rain to.
Kind of weedy, but.
All right, town administrator report?
All right, I got a bit of a pile for you. Election Tuesday, week from tomorrow, primary election at school, 7:00 to 7:00. I think you've got your, there's been a lot of email traffic from the moderators about your assignments and stuff. You're all good there, unless I hear otherwise. The setup is going to be Thursday around noon time. There's nothing going on in the school. It's a holiday Monday. We don't have a lot of staff around Friday, so we're jumping in on Thursday and give us time to figure out what we missed. But I think everything's okay. We're ready to go. The revow.
Wait, just a second. Back on the, back on the elections, there was that email that there's training tomorrow night via Zoom that I think we're all expected to participate in as well.
I had a conversation with Jonathan at Avatar, just wanted to relay some notes from that. This is the week when owners can have their appointments with Avatar to discuss the preliminary assessments that went out, that came out in the mail a few weeks ago. The, they had about 100 of them scheduled. It was a call ahead, schedule a, schedule an appointment. Avatar's feeling really good about the revow from a scientific point of view. They are flush with data, have done a ton of sales. Statistically, they feel like they're in very good shape because of all the information they have and all the churn in the market, so that's all, that all looks good. And they've got a good spread of locations, types of properties and all those things.
They're going to have a busy week though, aren't they? And they're quite a few.
About 100, which didn't seem to surprise them. I mean, we have 2,800 parcels in town or something like that, so, and what they're seeing was not, at least their initial look at it, was a lot of that. Nothing's changed. Why is my value gone so much?
Right, right.
Other conversations, not a type of property or a neighborhood in particular that was generating a whole lot of interest, so. Very broadly, it's too early to, it's too early because they're in preliminary data mode, but to have any formal reports, but very broadly, vacant land and waterfront properties increased a little bit more than others. Single-floor tight houses, ranches did a little bit better than Colonials. Probably doesn't surprise you to hear those things, but that's what they're seeing kind of anecdotally. And younger neighborhoods like Strawberry Lane, Maple Ridge seem to be running a little bit higher than they would have guessed otherwise, opposed to the older places. I don't think any of those are big surprises, but that's just kind of the general story. And again, townwide, we saw a valuation go from six to eight million, so, big increase, everything went up.
So, their meeting with Avatar, what's the role of the board from this point on?
So, Avatar will take what they hear from those properties that they have appointments with, if they need to make adjustments or go back out and look at something or correct something, if there's something wrong, they'll do that, and then they'll do the final, the final numbers. You will have to certify that work at some point.
Okay.
But there won't be anything until the abatement process kicks in, that the board will see anything for. Anything else on revow?
Nope. Nope.
New Hampshire retirement system, our police and firefighter pension programs set through a riveting, I don't know, last week about the estimating and actuarial processes they're using. What really matters to us is that the rates that we pay as employers for the pension programs are going up quite a bit. You may recall, we do that on a percentage basis, percentage of payroll for our uniformed firefighters and police officers. The unfunded liability statewide went from about $5 to $6 billion as they did their semi-annual update. So, that turns into higher rates for us. It's going to be police this year, 28% of payroll. The middle of next year goes from 28% to 33%. So, it's about a 25% increase in what we pay. Fires going from 30% to 33%. So, those are, over the course of a couple of years, will turn into some good-sized numbers for us. About 13, 13 in police, I think it's almost 20 grand a year increase in the next two years for us because of those, those changes.
That's not that bad.
Well, we're not getting any more for it.
I know.
And neither are retirees. You, you may also recall, this is something the state used to pay for until 10 years ago. And they set the employee percentages, so that's locked in by state law.
Yep.
There's no, all of the added burden this time, lacking in action from the legislature, is going to fall on the employers, which is the tactic, so that's what that sets. We are close to having our audit done. I expect to have a draft report this week. We're going to get one finding from them. They've had trouble reconciling year-end bank statements, outstanding checks that have, stale checks that were never cashed. It's an immateriality to them.
Okay.
So, that's a big problem, but we'll see when the final comes out, how they work it. In the transition of treasures, we may want to just do a transaction, clean that up and zero it out so that we don't have variance going forward. If you're up for it, I was going to put the Route 4 property on your agenda for next week. We set that aside when the governor put the kibosh on evictions and foreclosures and all that stuff. That's been lifted. And I would want to start that out with a refresher on where we left off, because we haven't talked about it for six months. And also, while we're doing that, I thought we might talk about two other properties. One is the corner of Freeman Hall Road. There's a parcel there that we tried to sell last year, almost sold, buyer backed out. I think that probably has some value. It's a good time to sell. You might want to consider that. And across Route 4, from the former USA Springs property, the big property, we have another parcel that we've been setting on, waiting for the USA Springs parcel to disposition in some way, shape, or form. We've got a nine-acre parcel across the street there. I've had somebody inquire about that, so I'm going to, we haven't really talked about that parcel in a long time because we've been waiting for the USA Springs piece, so I'm going to bring you stuff on both of those two. Don't want to do anything with it, but if you want to think about it, that's where, that'll be next, our next meeting. And lastly, we are about to finalize our revenues and associated other paperwork for tax rate setting. We've been watching revenues. We are going to be fine in final analysis. We've got about $2 million in budget and revenues, carbon and taxes. We're going to project somewhere within 25 grand of that $2 million, plus or minus. That's where we are right now, so. We had said, you had said before town meeting and at town meeting that you would use fund balance to make sure that we, we didn't lose anything revenue-wise, you know, make ourselves whole. And I'm still feeling good about that on the revenue side, so that's going to be within reach for you when you start to set taxes. No problem. He won't faze you at all, so. I think that is it.
Hey, Chris, I just got a text from someone saying that they're having a hard time hearing us, so I just think, pull your mic a little bit closer, please.
Hello?
Let's give it a shot.
Okay.
All right. Nothing else there, Chris?
No.
All right.
Actually, speaking of which, have you heard back from Red Thread?
From what?
Red Thread?
Oh, those are two guys that were in here?
That came to the ZIT.
No, I haven't heard any. And they said they were on vacation or something, and I want to talk with them, right?
Yeah.
But no, I haven't heard anything.
All right. Action review items from last meeting? Road standards?
I'm sorry, what were they?
Looks like road standards.
Oh, yeah, that was just a, let's get it, scheduled on the agenda to discuss it.
Want to talk about that or not?
If we do want to talk about it, I think we put it off till after our 7 o'clock meeting.
Well, you know, I think we can put it off. I think we just need to get it on agenda. I don't think we need to talk about it tonight, but just let's get it on the agenda somewhere. Does that make sense?
Yep. Are we good with it?
Schedule that.
Yeah.
Assessing the intent to cut on the exemption. Everybody had a chance to review that?
So, those are all in here? Those were all what you sent us, the printed copies here, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the only one.
Those came from Kell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the only one I had a question about was this one, I guess it's related to Taquay, is the State Park, is that correct?
Is this from logging at the State Park? Yeah, I was, I know they did logging at the State Park, that must be what this is. What do you want to know?
So, was that just their indication of their intent, or is that indication of?
This is, I think this is catching up on their intent after the fact.
But they pay, they pay the fees just like everybody else, right? Yeah, okay.
Yep, but that's not what this is.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to.
That's my interpretation. I'm not the expert.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to understand. Do you want us to do this at the same time?
You, yeah, if you want to, or you can, if you want to discuss it, we can do that later, will be non-public later, so.
Okay, I'll just, we'll hold that one, in case anybody wants to talk about it.
General business?
Um.
Do you want to assess something?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, did you need a motion on that?
No, you're single.
Okay. I have a general business. I don't know if you want to address it now or later. It's kind of related to the road standards.
Okay.
We can do it later if you want.
Yeah, we can do it later.
Okay.
Any other?
Anything that isn't on the agenda?
Yep.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
No, nothing that isn't on the agenda.
Okay.
Are you making a motion to, for the intent to cut or disable tax credit? Or no? Okay. Ever?
We just have to sign.
Okay.
All right, I sent you a couple different things. How many of you have lived through the NHMA policy? Every two years, municipal association kind of gives its lobbyists a set of priorities and marching orders, and member, member cities and towns, which is all around now, and individual members submit proposals for what the priorities and the policies of NHMA ought to be. That goes through an extensive committee process and gets to this point, which is they have a one-day policy conference where they approve this body of stuff. Each city or town sends somebody to this conference and they vote on each component of it, you know, up or down, typically maybe to someone else, but not much. And we are at the stage where you need to decide if you want to send somebody and do you want to send them with marching orders on each of these various things. We've done everything, and I think I've seen three of these now. In one of them, we had a knock-down, drag-out, spent a couple hours on each individual one, how's not a young girl vote?
Yep.
And on the other end of the spectrum, we had a select one, just cross out a couple that they didn't want to support, and everybody said fine, and we've just moved on. So, the question for you is how much time you want us to spend on this and how you want to vote it.
Yeah, so, I mean, just based on my experience in the past, I think, you know, we've, we've had Chris attend, and, you know, I think we should review them, and I think, I mean, I don't know that we necessarily have to go through the ranking process that we've done in the past, but I do think we should look at them, review them, and understand if there are any that we feel strongly about, that we really want Chris to understand and, you know, voice an opinion on if he has the opportunity. And what's the date of this, Chris?
The conference is in a month.
Friday, October, October 2nd, okay. So, we would have to do that at one of the upcoming meetings.
Your next, yeah, your next meeting. Can you text Shirley, Cheryl Smith, from Shirley's phone, and see if you can help her with that? They're trying to get him Zoom.
Oh.
See if you can handle it. Sorry, trying to help another board or committee get a meeting off the ground.
So, I mean, that would be my recommendation, is that we all review them and discuss it at the next meeting and give Chris indication if there's something that we feel very strongly about, or, I would also encourage that if there's anything that we have questions about, that we try to reach out to him before that meeting, if there's something we need to understand.
Everybody in agreement with that? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Who wants to go?
You know, you're so experienced at it now.
Thanks, Chris.
Dad of the office.
Okay. 2021 budget calendar.
Okay, so, we don't have to decide anything tonight, but before too long, I mean, in September, I think, you ought to, you ought to come to terms with what you would like to do around the deliberative session with that one part, so the budget committee will be setting its own calendar at their next meeting in the course of October. And obviously, we're going to need to conform to that calendar, but you actually set the date, time, and location of the deliberative session. And it would be helpful in terms of talking with the school and talking with the committee if we had an idea of what you're, what you were thinking on that regard, either a firm decision or marching orders or whatever. And a second question to you, is there anything you'd like to see differently in our, in the staff's, you know, budget presentation to you as we get, the SB2 changes the, changes the last step, but in terms of developing a budget, it probably doesn't mean that much to the department heads, but if there's anything differently you'd like to see, it would be good for me to hear that now, because they are.
It doesn't change anything in the way that we develop the budget, the way that we agree to the budget, and in the way that we present the budget to the public, other than it's a deliberative session, right? So, we would still.
Yeah, you will probably have some more political considerations around what is in the budget itself and what is a standalone warrant article. Over time, more and more things will find their way into individual warrant articles. That's what happens with SB2.
Yep, yep.
You know, it's fine, it's just that that's the reality of it. So, you will come across decisions, maybe not this year, but certainly along the way, where does this want to be a standalone vote, or does this want to fit into the operating budget somehow? But other than that, I don't think it changes much. The school, the school's been doing this for a long time. They have done Tuesdays and Wednesdays the last couple of years. I don't know if one of those was an outlier from a pattern. I had thought it was more of a Tuesday thing, but you have about an eight-day window to do them both, the Saturday-to-Saturday window, two Saturdays and all the days in between in the law that you're allowed to do these in, so.
So, given that window, does that force us to have it the same week, or does that give us enough?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, it's, it's Saturday, the 30th, Saturday, the 6th. I'm pretty sure the school district falls in the same six, you know, same window. They're voting the same day, so.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah.
Got to jump right into the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's arguments to be made on both sides of it, right? Like, I think my initial, my initial thinking was, you know, do it on a weeknight, but I don't know that people are going to like back-to-back weeknights.
My concern is fatigue. You know, you know, if you're going to have multiple meetings, you got the school, now you have ours, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, folks are going to get, you know, meeting fatigue and need to not show up. And then we could run into the same issue where if we have it on a Saturday, you know, we only have a select few that show up. Who knows? I mean, now that it's an SB2, it may be totally different.
Well, I mean, I think, yeah, I've gone back and forth on it too, Ben. I'm thinking that the, the people who come to town meeting are the people who want to come and participate in the live process.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the people that are still going to do it, and they've done it on a Saturday, so does that mean that we should stick with the Saturday?
I would feel better that we have a Saturday designated for this, because I do know in the past that sometimes school board meetings, deliberative session, can run several hours and, you know, here we are, one midnight, and people got to get up first thing in the morning. They may be more apt to deliver it on a Saturday, and at least for the town portion of it. School won't change theirs.
I haven't had a communication with the school, but they're, they're in a well-established group, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think one of the things that we heard a lot about at town meeting was that people didn't want to get up their Saturday to be there.
Yep.
Granted, that was the people that were, you know, people that spoke in favor of SB2, but they were the majority.
Right, right.
That was one of the driving things in the narrative. I don't know if, you know, there was only 150 people there that day, so take that for what it's worth, but that was one of the major complaints about the old way of doing business was that people didn't want to go Saturdays.
Yeah, but people, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, there's no right answer here, right? Because if, if the school board's having it on a Tuesday, say, that leaves us with Wednesday or Thursday.
Right.
And now, you know, is it, you come Saturday, or do you come two nights in a row or two nights out of a week? One thing I would not want to do absolutely is try to do them both in the same night.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Which is a no.
No. I'd like the other board members to weigh in. John?
Hey, two nights in the week. We have our night, school board has their night. I've been to enough of the, that, you know the handful that's going to show. For some reason, if it's something that comes up in our budget that's a real, you know, stickler for the town, then I don't see, even, I personally don't see a large turnout for our deliberative session for this, it's a lack of board. I wish there was a larger one. I'm not saying I don't want a larger one, but just knowing over past experience, if there's nothing critical on there, it's not going to be a large turnout.
Anthony, or Tony?
How do we feel about doing it on a Saturday just to, like, appease the folks that were upset about losing town meeting?
It's kind of why I've gone back and forth.
Barrington's consecutive Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, but they're not all day, are they?
I probably varies year to year.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I understand, people have to work and again, meetings are at night, whatever, they're late. Being the first time we've done it, I don't know. Maybe we should do a Saturday, at least the first time.
I would be, I'd be more apt to say, let's do a Saturday.
Saturday, you said?
Yeah.
Well, it's also not cast in stone this year.
No, no, but-
Right?
Where would we hold the meeting?
What, what'd you say, John?
Where would we hold the meeting?
That's another question.
Yeah.
Again, I think if we use the gymnasium over here, it would be more than enough ample space for our, our meeting, but, and last year at the school board meeting, I was there for that and there wasn't even 40 people there, so.
Here, right?
Yeah.
You know, and they set up over a hundred some chairs and we could have fit everybody in this, this morning here tonight, I think, so. And that was on a big budget.
It sounds to me, the general consensus is this board sounds like Saturday would be more, be more productive per se and it holds to keeping somewhat of our tradition of the past almost 300 years of town meeting.
I think a Saturday morning might get a little better turnout.
Yeah, I, I think so too, so just let's make a decision tonight and just say Saturday.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
I'd like it to be the first Saturday of the, of the period.
All right, done.
Good.
You all in favor of that?
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
And then we'll see how it goes this year, what kind of feedback we get.
We can make adjustments wherever we need to.
Exactly, exactly.
Any more topics, discussion on that? No? All right, ready to roll right into our appointment?
Rock and roll.
Tammy? Hi, come right up.
My daughter Caitlin.
Hi Caitlin, be sure to talk into the mic, state your name and your, your address, please.
My name's Tammy Di Francesco, 214 Raymond Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire.
Caitlin Brown, 214 Raymond Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire.
Okay, welcome. Guess we're here to discuss the water cross event?
Yes.
We just, we understand that there had been some complaints made and we just wanted to come today to answer any questions that anyone might have in, in the event that there isn't anyone here with any questions. We're hoping to move forward with the permit and just that today so we could get rolling for the next event.
Well, I think the biggest concern that has arise out of all these meets so far is the noise complaints. And it sounds like in the beginning, there was a little bit of a poor communication between the event organizer and say the neighbors that have butted your property. Don't, having said that, I mean-
We did speak to them since then.
The second time around, right?
Um, yeah, after the meeting.
And all the, all the property butters are aware that there's a third one coming?
The, the, a lot of the property butters are here.
Okay.
Yes, and we sent letters out to the property butters and then spoke to those that were closest and the letter included information, dates and times of the next event and the practice times as well, information about the noise, a way for them to get in contact with us or Steve in case they had any questions or anything before the event gets started. So we, we tried to do a much better job of making sure that everyone knew when it was going to be and what to expect and, and had an avenue of letting us know if they had any concerns.
Is that what we saw? What she's referring to, is that the, did we see that? Is that the one you've sent us?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I have a couple of concerns, Ben.
Go ahead, Donna.
So, so the noise, for sure. And I know there's a butters here and there's probably some supportive and some not supportive of it. I think personally, I live about a mile as the crow flies away from it. It was quite loud, quite loud. And people who were, you know, on the far side of the lake could hear it as well. So noise is definitely a factor in my mind. However, there are two other things that concern me. The one is that I think that you guys indicated that over the course of the three days, there was 1,500 people there, that we saw in the email that you sent.
I counted it wrong. I counted another set of bracelets, it was like 700 and we count, we numbered the bracelets we counted. I counted another set that they were getting to a different, I, I included that in there, so there was 786. We have the brace, we had numbered bracelets this time.
Okay, so it wasn't 1,500?
No.
Okay, because that, that's concerning to me about the number of people, because when they first came, it was supposed to be 200-ish.
250, yeah.
Yep, and now this application from the 14th says five to 700 across three days and you had 750, what's the next one going to be? So I have concern about attendance.
Is, is the people going to make the noise louder? What is it concerned about that, there was no concern with traffic, no concern with court of audience?
I'm concerned about what's committed to in the permit and what's not. And that, if you let me finish, my, my other complaint, and this is more of a internal one, and that is that, again, it's my understanding from the email that was sent, that the, because of the horrible thunderstorms that came through, that the detail officer on duty allowed the event to go longer for catch up or additional races, that should not have happened. The officer on duty had no authority to extend the time. He should have been complying with what was agreed to in the permit.
Yep.
But we did only go 15 minutes beyond that, it wasn't an hour beyond.
Well, it was, it was just, it went to seven o'clock on Sunday night.
Yeah, it did.
I mean, I was, I mean, so, it wasn't 15 minutes.
Oh, I thought, it said they could go till 6:30, give or take the engines running, so I didn't know.
6:00 PM?
She did say we could go an hour. I asked her and she said that she, she gave us a permission.
So my concerns are, you know, creep, right? How does it, I mean, well, and, and the planning board.
Yeah.
Weighing in on this.
Yeah.
Which is a very big concern in my mind.
Do we want them to see the letter?
Go ahead.
No, no, I'll give them the letter if they want to see the letter.
I mean, you can summarize it, just kind of read the summary of it.
So the planning board sent us, as the board of selectmen, a letter, says, you know, I'll read it out, "Dear Chairman, obviously, the planning board has been aware of the, of non-permitted use for property 214 Raymond Road, parcel, you know, maps 69 lot 10, as the area being a residential agricultural zone. And they understand that the board, you know, we've been in discussion with you guys for these events and having, and we had public hearings about it and obviously we talked and we granted the last two, but as it comes from the planning board, that they're saying it is not our jurisdiction to allow you, that you need to go to them and get a zoning and planning board approval for this, because the fact that we were granting a single time and since now this is going to be three times, that, in their mind, that we overstepped our bounds of the single time. Just, and now I'll give you a copy of the letter, it's just from what you hear from us.
Is there any rule or anything that they're, they sort of cite to, to say that, that you can, your limit is one?
It's more about our authority to be able to do it.
And so is the authority of this board only a single, single events, or?
Well, this is, this is really new to us.
Yes.
You're the first event that we've, we've ever had to deal with, so, you know, as to be a little green on our, or I'll say myself, or whatever, on this event, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against your event at all, but, you know, we're in that way of thinking, you know, making sure it's right for everybody.
Sure.
We, we came into this, we, staff came to you 10 days before the first event, after we learned about it?
Yep.
Right, so we, we came to you and said, how does, how do you want us to enforce this? Or enforce around this? And we said, here, there's a statute that says that you, the board, has to license these kind of events because they're competitions and that's what you've been doing. And the other piece was, you, you know, this is, this is effectively going to become a change in use. Do you want us to, you know, say just no, don't let it happen, or do you want to treat the three as, as one, like a season to, you know?
Yep.
Say, okay, here's, here's an event that somebody had on their private property. If it's going to continue, then it needs to, you know, change in use. And your, your guidance to us was, yeah, treat the three like one, we want to hear about every, you know, in terms of licensing, and then send it to the planning board. So that's, that's how we got to this point. You may have started on the site plan process already, I don't know.
I'm in the, I'm in the process of-
You started, right, so they've started that concurrent with-
I haven't contacted, I haven't contacted the planning board yet, I'm trying to get the site plan in order.
Yeah, so there's, there's, you know, the, the planning board process, we, we had, given what you told us, we said, okay, let's do that over the winter before we get into next year's business. So that's how you got to where you are and you can-
Chris, did we overstep our bounds by, I mean, I remember we, we decided to, like you said-
Well, we said, how do you, how do you want us to enforce this?
Three times, right.
And, yeah, you could, you could make a case that that was stretching it, you know, that, that's a fair point. And we said, hey, do you, how do you want, how do you want us, you know, you dictate enforcement as, as the select board. And we said, you know, you want us to shut this thing down before it ever gets off the ground? What do you, you know, what's your, you know, how, how fast do you want to bend over to, to help them do this? And so that's what we did, all, all along, thinking this was a, this season was an event, so to speak, and, and then we handed it to the planning board for site plan approval.
I mean, I, I think we, looking at the letter from this planning board, I think we did overstep our bounds and I, I do think we tried to do it out of, you know, a spirit of, you know, cooperation and, and support and, but I think we were also rushed to make a decision and I don't think we did ourselves any favor by being rushed into that decision, is how I feel.
What's the date for the next event?
The next event, the date-
26th to the 27th.
I mean, if their, if their definition, their interpretation of a commercial event is correct, then perhaps we overstepped our bounds, but I don't know that they're-
But I mean, is there anything in the town right now, say if Tammy wanted to just have a private party, invite people to do whatever out on the pond or whatever, do we have any jurisdiction to go there and say, you can't do this? I don't know.
No.
That's what, that's what I mean, at least, I mean, they came, they came to the town.
It's when the use of the, in my understanding, it's when the use of the property changes, like a one, a one-time party, no, you know, I mean, jurisdiction over that, it's private property, do what you want. It's when the use of the property changes and what the planning board is saying is that it has changed, by doing it repeatedly, it has changed.
If-
We just got this today, so.
Yeah.
Again, it's, again, it's, it's make a quick decision, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what were the dates on the next one?
The event is the 26th and the 27th and the practice is Friday, the 25th.
Then we have, do you have two more planning board meetings?
Yeah, we, we told you early in this process that this would never happen in time. The site plan process takes way too long to-
Yep.
You know, but the, the event, if you had, if you had said go to the planning board from day one, this event never would have, would have happened. The time wasn't there.
Aside from this particular event, you know, someone had brought up that if someone wanted to have a large family reunion where there's, they're going to have a concert there or something, but it turns into a yearly family union, reunion event, isn't that all under the same?
Well, you're not charging a mission to your family.
Yeah, I think the, the terminology is the commercial event. It's a commercial event.
So if they were to say, well, we accept donations and the donations will go towards whatever, does that change the, the event?
I can't answer that.
What if they buy-
Hold on, hold on.
It seems like a, it seems like a-
No, I'm just throwing things out there, I'm not saying advocating for one or the other, I'm just throwing stuff out there for topics of discussion. So you'll have your moment, sir. Okay.
I mean, we've already agreed on letting them have three this year, right? They got one more to go.
You have, yeah, I mean, you've, you've agreed with the theory, with the understanding that you would get a chance to revisit it after each one, so we've only licensed the two that have happened. You have not licensed the third one.
What is the legal ramifications if we were to approve this third one as it sits right now?
I don't, well, they, that would presumably go forward.
I'm concerned with the planning board.
I don't know how I would advise the planning board if they wanted to try and stop it.
And how does this, the issue where they're saying that it's changing into a commercial use, different from the fact that it's an operating gravel pit where sand is sold and materials are sold, also a commercial activity?
Different, different types of activity with different impacts on the, the surrounding area and the property itself.
Jack, go ahead and answer the question.
But you could, you could, you know, start a pig farm there because you have a gravel pit there, both commercial operations, but they're different.
Right.
All right.
Well, and also understanding just that with that different use, it's for these limited events that we plan, so of course, hopefully they could see it differently.
That'll all be part of the site process with the planning board. You're talking about how often is it going to be used this way, what are the impacts on that?
Is, is there a way that we could come to maybe some sort of compromise here? I mean, does it have to be three days?
I, I don't think the number of days matters.
Well, it's a noise level and people, I, what I hear from the folks that are out there, the complaints is that, you know, it takes up the entire weekend, it ruins their weekend. If you shorten it to one day, I mean, could that satisfy? But then I, I read that, you know, they, they changed their events for next year for one in the spring, one in the summer and one in the, in the fall, and that seemed like a decent compromise. What can we do to show that Nottingham does support, to a point, business?
It's not a business, it's not a business that is contributing taxes, so it's not, you can't put it on the same par as like-
She's a property owner, she pay taxes?
It's $16,000 a year to Nottingham.
You do, you do, but liar's paradise is paying, you know, taxes as being a business in town. You're not paying for the water cross event as a business.
Oh, no, but I am for the Nottingham Indian gravel.
Okay, all right.
Just because everybody keeps on saying that it's residential, it's not. That lot 10 is-
No, you'll have your, you'll have your moment, sir.
So Ben might-
Lot 8 is residential where I live, there's two lots.
So Ben, my, my understanding though is because we have no noise ordinance.
Right.
Though maybe we should, we don't in Nottingham, so it's not a matter of the noise, because we have no authority.
But that's the biggest complaint.
It is the biggest complaint, except for the concerns raised by the planning committee.
How many complaints were there?
Can, can I just finish, except for the complaints about the planning board and, again, in my mind, the fact that, you know, we've got number of attendee creep, which is-
A number what, I'm sorry?
Attendee creep.
And something else I was thinking for, if we're talking about, you know, we'd really like to keep this event scheduled, but is there a way, if this board does have jurisdiction or authority to do singular events, can we sort of reclassify this? This is the last event here and of course, next year before anything was to go forward, it would be after the site and the planning board, but, you know, this, it's not like we have two left, we just have one and, and if that's, can be classified as a single, singular event?
And something else I was thinking for, if we're talking about, you know, we'd really like to keep this event scheduled, but is there a way, if this board does have jurisdiction or authority to do singular events, can we sort of reclassify this? This is the last event here. And of course, next year, before anything was to go forward, it would be after the site and the planning board. But, you know, it's not like we have two left, we just have one. And if that's, can be classified as a singular event?
But we're treating the entire season as a single event, which according to...
It's not a learning experience, it seems, you know, now we know.
Into how we issue the permit for this, we can dictate the changes that we want to it. So if the hours are too long or something like this, there are changes that we can make to the permit.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
Steve, can Steve speak?
We'll get to him. But you folks are all set? All right. Actually, the gentleman in the back, gentleman in the back had a question first. So, yeah. If you can just come up and...
He needs to come up and sit and say his name and speak into the microphone.
Thank you. State your full name and address, please.
Lee Weldy, 110 Nottingham Road. And as you talk about the crow's lies, I'm less than 800 feet from the pit. You mentioned Lyra's Paradise. Up until two weeks ago, they had a week-to-week car show. They had probably 50 to 75 cars there. Do they come for a permit every week? I don't think so. They probably don't have a site plan review to use Jimmy's mother's property to put cars on the property. That's not for a car show, that wasn't for display. They have speakers, music playing, they block, they cone the road off. They don't have a detail officer there. So when you start looking at all this, you've got a way, you can't single out one business and let another do something that... Lyra's Paradise is a store and pizza place. I understand what they do. Their foundation of the car show is a fundraiser for it. They charge a fee. People pay to go in there, they play music, they have cars lined up, they have spectators walking through there, people sell parts. They are more than, they've exceeded what that store's permitted use is. So if you're gonna target a particular business, you might want to think about how you're gonna do it. Because they have a weekly car show every Tuesday night through the whole summer. I understand they shut down because of an issue. But that being said, I've talked to every duty officer that's been there. I've talked to lieutenant, who was there the last time. She asked us about the ticket count, and I think we came up closer with it. I've been to every event. I've sat on my steps, and the cars going by my house with my decibel meter are louder than the sleds going on the pond. Motorcycles going by at 98 decibels. The highest I've had at my house is 86. Yes, noise travels. I hear Lee Speedway, I hear Star Speedway, I hear New England Dragway. And I'm up on the hill, so I get the noise. It's a drone. You go out on the lake, you got the boats on the lake, I can hear them. Yeah, I can hear the fireworks from Pataqueway, and it bets the backside of my property. I'm not, I do not have a problem with what's going on down the pit as far as noise. I'm a strong supporter of it. I believe that they have a right to use their property. They wanted to, if they wanted to circumvent it, and say it was a family gathering, as you were talking about, or an event, or whatever, there are other avenues that they could pursue. But they're being forward, they're coming through to you to talk and ask for permission and guidance through it. They've agreed they'll go to the planning board, they'll address what the issues are, whatever I'm sure she's got to do. She's a good neighbor, always has been. I've lived on this road, I've lived in Raymond since 77, and I can tell you, when Pike was running that drag line at 4:30 in the morning, and they fired that 671 Detroit up screaming, I heard it. Their trucks coming down the hill with their engine brakes, I heard it. That was every single day of the week. That pit can operate every single day of the week. They were going in there seven days a week hauling sand out of there. So a two-day event, I can tell you right now, the owners of the property, I don't even hear their backup alarms now, okay? But used to be able to hear everything Pike did. That banging and clanging with that drag line going across, pulling the sand out of the pit, their loaders and everything, that was a seven-day-a-week job that they ran out of that place. So two days, once a month, doesn't bother me a bit. I hear the boats on the lake, do I come in here and complain about them? No. It's a recreation. Nottingham's primary function, excluding the bedroom town community, is recreation at Pataqueway up on the lake. All the boats, you had complaints about the snowmobiles on the lake in the summ, in the wintertime? And they go out there, they run the trails midnight, 1:00 in the morning. So I don't think the 10 to 6 is an issue. That's my two points. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Reynolds, I'm the event organizer. My address is 99 Micah Terrace.
What town?
I'm in Milton, New Hampshire. Lee touched on a lot of stuff that I was gonna touch on, so I'll cut that stuff out. Like Donna said, it's loud. Absolutely, it's loud. There's no argument with that. And everybody here tonight, I'm 99% sure, nobody's against it. You're gonna have people for it, I mean, you're gonna have people against it. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what you do in life, there's gonna be people against it. We had 700-plus people for it. You're always, it doesn't matter what we do. We could quiet the sleds down, we could make them go the opposite direction, we could make it, you can shorten the schedule, it doesn't matter. Those people that complain, I'm willing to bet, are the same people that complain about everything else. So if there was 700 people for it, plus, if you look at the Nottingham Facebook pages since our last board meeting, Kathy that sat right here almost in tears against it, Tammy went over there, talked to her, everybody get on the same page. You guys asked us to notify the town within, I think, 1,500 yards. We did 2,500, whatever, I think it was a mile and a half. You're always gonna have people against it. It doesn't matter. Like, you, there's, people are against the color of this building. Like, I'm just saying, it's, people complain. You go to Dunkin' Donuts at 6:00 in the morning, those people that all sit in the corner, and they talk about Kathy's dog eating on their fence or whatever, those are the people. It's always gonna happen. I don't want to battle, like, I felt attacked last meeting, so I just, Tammy and I, we let the locals know, we said, hey, we were outnumbered last meeting, a few people that were against it, and they're like, oh, heck no, that ain't gonna happen again. So they all came to show their support of this event. You had 700-plus people for the event, at the event. You got, how many people here tonight? What are the complainers? You guys were just talking about, what day do we have?
Mr. Reynolds, we don't want to turn this into an antagonistic meeting here, where, you know, the people that support it versus some folks at home maybe watching this are against it.
Yep, I understand that.
If you want to continue to have your meets and all that stuff, we have to find common ground, you know, and civility.
Yes, and we, and from the beginning, our racing, like normally, it takes us from 9:00 to 7:00. We've compromised and shortened those days up. To answer your question, you guys asked, like, oh, can we compromise and shorten the days? As you know, we got rain on the last Sunday. We go bell to bell, and we, like, it looks like scurrying mice in the pits. Like, we barely have enough time. People miss classes, people miss heats, just to accommodate this town. Like, you guys asked us to do certain things, and we're like, you know, doing, we're doing our best to accommodate the people that are against it. But we can only go so far. So if every single time one person comes to complain, something else is added, it's just gonna drive it right out until it's nothing else.
Hey, Steve, the permit for the 14th said 500 to 700, and you guys keep saying 700-plus. How, if we approved it and gave you a number, how would you limit it to that number of people that the permit approved?
So like Tammy said, and I think it's a very, very, very valid point. The number, like, you say sound's the biggest complaint, right?
No, 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 I'm just, sound, put sound aside. Sound is obnoxious and annoying, but there's no sound ordinance in Nottingham, so we can't do anything about that.
Okay.
Right? My concerns are adherence to the permit, and whether or not this board really has authority to agree to this based on what the planning board has raised concern about. So what I'm asking you is, first, I saw an email that said there were 1,500 people. So apparently, that was a miscalculation of the numbers. But if the permit says 500 to 700 across three days, how would you limit it to that number?
You can't, to be honest.
Okay, so, I mean...
Yes, but, hold on, the permit never said, we demand that these numbers, from day one, you guys asked us how many. We have food trucks and vendors and stuff, they ask us the same question. Tammy, Tammy's brand new to this. She asked me in the beginning, she goes, how many people are gonna show up at my house? I can't rub a genie ball and say, hey, do you guys know how many people are gonna come to the board meeting tonight? You can't, you can't, like, predict that. But there's never been a problem with volume of people. That hasn't phased anything. So to, to, like, you know, kind of back us into a corner on spectator count, it doesn't do anything for the town, and it doesn't do, it does nothing to the town, and it does nothing but hurt us. You know what I mean? So the number of spectators does nothing to disrupt the town. We haven't had one car go out onto the main road. When I first came in here, the biggest dispute was traffic. Oh, my God, there's gonna be traffic. There wasn't one car that went out onto the main road. Then, we wanted a second detail because of the number of people that were there. The detail was there for traffic. Then, when there was no traffic, it was almost like, oh, let's defer it. Let's say it's because of the number of people. Like, so you, I get where the town's coming from. There's gonna be people for it, there's gonna be people against it, but not put yourself on our side. You guys are putting these limitations and restrictions in place, saying, let's have this stuff for these reasons. And when those reasons don't exist, oh, let's change it now. Let's say it's because of this. You know what I mean?
I think that's an unfair statement.
But to answer your question, I can't, like, I can't predict the number of people that come. If people drive from five minutes away or five hours away, you know, to have them get there and say, we reached our limit, sorry, you gotta turn around and go home. You advertise the event...
Just, Chris, what happens if something goes wrong? Who's to blame?
In what aspect?
Hypothetically, anything.
Accidents happen every day.
Again, I'm...
We have, we have $2 million insurance. You can't, this is life, like, this is what this whole world's turning into, like, people that are, like, soft people that are against things, like, there's gonna be complainers.
Yeah, but you gotta understand, we have a responsibility to the town.
Yes, I understand that. So your town, like, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I want you guys to want me here, I want the town to want me here. I know there's gonna be people that don't like it. On a board of six people, I guarantee you, there's gonna be board members that are for it and against it. That's life. But what I don't want is, just because a couple people don't like it, ruin it for the whole world. I don't like the color purple, but I can't say, hey, no purple allowed in the town. I know that's a drastic comparison, but that's what it's turning into. So if you were to base your, base your decision off tonight, off the people that are in the room, I mean, everybody's for it. Where are they? If you were to base your decision on the number of complaints versus the number of spectators, like, unanimously, you guys were selected by the town. Unanimously, the town is saying, make this event happen. So you're saying, represent the town. The town, for the majority, is saying, let it happen. And you guys said from the get-go, let's get these three events out of the way, and then we'll revisit it before the planning board. But you said, let us hold on to these permits, just to, you know, kind of keep tabs on things and make adjustments as we go. You didn't say, let's hold on to these to cancel the last one.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr.?
Dan, can I add? From when you first came in, and again, you know, I'm not against your program. My brother was there last week.
I understand that, I understand there's gonna be people that are...
I'm gonna bring up my own, what I feel is necessary to bring up.
Yep.
So when you first came in, you know, I've been in all these, you know, this was the water cross. You know, you have your drags, you have this. Now, as I'm reading here, looking right here at the Facebook page, now we're having a swap meet, which I take it's the selling and buying of snowmobiles, and people are gonna bring trailers and stuff like this. Again, nothing to do with water cross, this is just, now this is a swap meet. And I've been around doing it enough, I've seen enough swap meets for snowmobiles and people have done. And then we're also now making this a camping event. As it says, well...
From day one, there's been camping, there's people that drive...
RVs, specifically said...
There's no tents allowed.
But again, I'm just saying that you're not specifying that on here, on advertisements.
I can add that if you'd like, if that's what...
I'm just, and again, it's just because you might have people, when it says camping, people might just come, and they might just bring their pickup truck and have their tents out back and everything. I'm reading the Facebook post, not towards what you're advertising, I'm just seeing right here, it's on the Facebook, it says camping. Now, I think of camping as having a campfire, drinking beers, and, you know, having my tent.
Having a good time?
Yeah, yeah, again, I'm not against camping. But again, I'm just saying that that was not originally part of what your original plan was when you were here.
When I came in the first time, that was touched on, that there would be camping, it was dry camping, all the, and you specifically said from day one, no tents, and we haven't had tents since day one.
But again, I'm just specifying that on, it just says camping. It doesn't say specific. Now, I'm just being aware of that, when people come, you know, are you ready to turn those people away? And say, you can't camp here with your tent.
With the tents, yes, and they made it, they made it aware tonight, they're like, hey, we should add this to the website, just because, you're not wrong.
No, they're good, that's why I'm bringing it up.
No, I agree, we've touched on it tonight, and I agree 1,000%, but the, that, keeping the website up to date, as well as this, as well as my personal, like, there's so much going on, they're important, they're very important, but we've never had a, like, an issue with it, so it just wasn't put high on the priority list. But I agree that I could add that easily.
Just the no tents part. Just something to be aware. No one wants to be the bad guy and turn people away.
I agree.
Tony?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I can understand noise concerns, and I get the closer you are, the louder it's gonna be. But also, you know, I think, you know, this, this has been a learning process for all of us.
It has.
And as of yet, you know, I think Tammy and Steve have abided by every restriction that we've put on them, you know, every condition, as we, as we all try to figure this out. So other than the issue of figuring out whether or not we have the authority to authorize this, I don't have a problem with proceeding with the third event. You know, I do think we need to get on the same page as the planning board. You know, their letter specifies map 69 lot 10, and Tammy pointed out that it's actually lot eight, which is commercial. So maybe that would have changed, maybe that would have made a difference to the planning board, you know, Chairman Dirk, if he had, if he had the correct information, maybe we wouldn't have got this letter. So I definitely think we gotta check in with them and make sure that we're all on the same page as, in terms of intent, you know, what is it we're gonna do here? But beyond that, I wouldn't have a problem with allowing it to proceed.
Tyler? I just want everybody to weigh in.
Yeah, I wish they'd have synchronized swimming, too, but... No, I, same thing, like I said, we, they came in here, and again, I know the first one was rushed, and probably wasn't the best way to start something off. But I mean, the one thing I'll say, we did agree, all of us, though, too, that this will never become Fremont. So I don't mean that, I mean, it seems like it's getting bigger, which I think it's good for people to come to Nottingham and hopefully spend some of their money at Lyra's Paradise or wherever. But again, I'm, I sit on the planning board as well, so I, you know, I kinda wanna stay neutral, but I believe, you know, I agree, I think we should let them finish the season.
Okay.
How big is the pond? Oh, it's more than big enough for synchronized swimming.
And just to bring to a point, what he just said, yeah, the fact of it getting bigger, you know, part of the thing was it not to become a Fremont. You know, and again, that's something to think about, but I think when this actually, by these three events, the planning board should have enough information when they go to their session, and they're gonna be tough.
I told them from the beginning, I do literally advise them...
Oh, yeah? Oh, good. I'm just gonna say, they're gonna be tough.
So by having three of them, it separates it out, they're not one time a year.
Yeah, again, it will be, after this event, it's gonna be out of our hands, almost. So...
Well, the difference between what you folks are doing and what Fremont is doing, thousands of people versus...
But again, I only I only bring up that one thing too, is the fact that now there's a swap event that's going on there. So that might be bring other people than spectators to what the the water cross is going.
Ben, can I just?
Can I say?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I just summarize my feelings on this? Um, I'm not against the event at all. I I love having fun too, right? Not against it at all. Don't like the noise, but there's nothing I can do about that, right? Um, what I'm concerned about is that I'm concerned about this board legally doing the right thing and overstepping our bounds or not. And all of this has been at the last minute. The letter from the planning board we got today. And so again, we're being asked to make a decision without having the opportunity to consult with the planning board. And and again, my biggest concern, not against the event at all, just concerned about this board behaving in the way that it should and doing the things that it should and not the things that it shouldn't.
Can I say one thing? My neighbor up at our James Owens, 45 acres behind me, just said that the swap meet has to be on his property.
That has nothing to do with what I just said. What I just said was about the board, not the event. Yeah.
I thought I was just throwing it out there. He owns 58 acres. He owns my 90.
So is his? Is he in a different town? It's in a different town?
No, he's in nine.
Oh, is he? Okay. Okay.
Uh, you know, something else for us to be conscious of too. I mean, it was brought up how, you know, lyers has a similar type of event when they have the car shows. So whatever we put in place for process licensing, whatever, whether it's us or the planning board, we've got to make sure that it's applied equally.
And that was an excellent point. I hadn't considered that. That's an excellent point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we have to apply it fairly across the whole town.
And and I'm not saying that we need to regulate every single little thing that happens in town. Again, it's this board and the behavior of this board that I'm concerned about.
That would be my, like I said, my major concern right now too, is make sure that we're acting within our authority. So we definitely got to touch base. Touch base with Dirk.
So the lot that we're actually, he's talking about is a residential and the lot that it's actually on is on the commercial side. Okay.
So I I, yeah, I I don't think we should vote on the permit tonight until we've had a chance to
Hold on, sir.
Get in with, um, with planning board, with the chairman, you know, and.
Would Dirk be receptive in coming to the next meeting? I mean, now we're cutting it close here, but.
I would think so, but, um, we'll reach out to him. I mean, when do they meet next? You have a direct link already, so.
Yeah, no, it's next Wednesday, I believe. So I mean, maybe the select board could go there as well.
Okay.
I just don't. Oh, again, it's not gonna be fair for us to delay this out if the if the planning board, you know, is not willing to make or compromise on it or do anything that night, then it's gonna come still back to us.
Well, can we get can we get legal advice, Chris?
Because I think we should let them know as as quick as possible.
Oh, I agree.
You got you guys are you guys ask us to make preparations, precautions, but like, get get the word out there. There's a lot that goes into it. And the biggest hurdle the entire time has been being rushed. And that's what it comes down to is being rushed. I posted.
I I get that, Steve, but you also.
I understand. I understand.
You gonna let me talk?
Yep.
Okay. The legality that we are facing as a board, you know, we don't want to be in a position where we're overstepping the planning board. Okay. And that's what we're talking about is trying to figure out the legality of that.
I understand.
That's why we want to have get legal advice and all that stuff. I mean, not. Listen, just as Donna said, I'm in support of this as well. It's just we got to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure everything's above board and it's legal.
I understand that 1,000% and what I was trying to say is, before we came to Nottingham, we were in Baldwin, Maine. Baldwin, Maine actually doesn't have one business in the entire town. They're in Amish town. When I walked in there, same thing happened. And this is very, um, pertinent to what's going on. Their planning board, their select board, they're like, what the, like, there's no rules in place. There's nothing. There's no there's there's nothing in place to abide by. So what happened in that town, and I won't speak for this town, is you know, you guys are overstepping your boundaries. There was no boundaries to overstep because there weren't rules or policies in place. So what it came down to in that town, which it, I'm just saying, it turned into the planning board was against it and the select board was for it. The planning board looked at the select board and I mean, the planning board, I mean, the select board looked at the planning board and said, your job, your duty is to uphold policies. Our duty is to represent the town and delegate what goes on, what doesn't, et cetera. I don't know if that's the case here.
But we would need legal advice. We would need our lawyers to tell us who has the authority.
I understand that 1,000% and I'm sorry, he doesn't have a name tag, but like he said.
Chris.
Chris, sorry. That stuff's gonna take time. And what I'm afraid of is this next meeting that we go to, the planning board and the select board still can't decide and we're all stuck, you know, what do we do? I'm advertising for it because you guys want, you don't want it rushed. You want the word out there. I've already started advertising for it, making small preparations, but there's financial preparations that go into it.
I understand. I understand. The problem is hasty decisions on the part of any board can turn into a lawsuit against the town.
Do you accept the premise that this just isn't allowed generally? Like, you couldn't just all of a sudden run these three events every year without some.
1,000%. That's why we're here.
You accept the premise that the government has some role in approving a three a three day event, something or other. You you if you accept that premise, you have to accept that it doesn't happen quickly. And it 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 definitely doesn't happen quickly when you don't approach the town with with the concept that you that you let it let the town find out about it through a back door 10 days before it happens. So your your inconvenience is a concern. They've been these. This board has really bent over quite a bit to mollify your inconveniences despite the 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 fact that they have to approve all this stuff. So if you accept the fact that the government has to regulate it somehow, you're gonna have to let the government work its way through it.
What what I meant by that is I.
Doesn't happen and.
I understand that 1,000% and I accept the fact that it's an inconvenience, but.
What is Don here? How long has Northwood been going on?
Since 1972.
Have they ever been before the town?
No.
Okay. Northwood's been going on since the 1970s.
Okay, that's Northwood.
I under I understand. I'm saying, hold on. I'm accepting. I'm admit like, I'm accepting that there's an inconvenience. I that's why I'm here. Because just like Baldwin, I want the town to be aware and I want to be on the same page. I don't want to be caught off guard. Just so you guys know and you're aware, Epping is actually the same way. Epping never went to the town. And again, we're not Epping. We're not Northwood, but this is a sport. And we've been doing what every other venue has been doing since day one. I'm the first person to go before town and say, do you guys mind if we have this happen? If you call the New Hampshire fishing game officer for this area, he'll tell you the same thing. I'm the only one that's come before the town and asked for permission. Epping kind of grandfathered into it. It it's been going on for decades. So it just became a normal thing. Northwood, the same thing. I came before the town and said, hey, can this happen? And now it's shooting me in the foot. A lot of people said, don't go to the town. No, 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 no.
The town came to you and said, hey, what the hell's going on?
No, fishing game. No, no, no. Fishing game beat me to.
That's how the town found out.
Fishing game beat me to you guys. It wasn't you got like, you know what I'm saying? I don't I don't and I don't want this to turn into a battle. When I first came in here, basically, we I mean, if we go back on the YouTube, it was pretty much an agreement. We'll get through this summer and you guys go before the planning board. We're asking for this the last event. And then you guys wash your hands of it. And we understand the planning board's gonna be tough. We understand that they may not approve it. We may not be back next year. But in order for us to do what we need to do, we're just asking, and by we, I mean, everybody in this room tonight is asking for the last permit to move forward. And we go forward with the planning board.
So we have two options. One option is that this board can make a vote tonight, a yea and a yea and a ye vote tonight. Right? That's one option. In my opinion. You guys might have other options you want to throw out there. The second option is that we ask Chris to get an opinion from the lawyer and that we go to the planning board as a board next Wednesday, the ninth is when they meet. Is that?
I believe so.
Mm hmm.
I'll check real quick.
We go with legal opinion in hand or we get the opinion from the lawyer that says you guys can make the decision, you know? But but that we at least try to make a decision for them. So I'm fine whichever way the board wants to go with either of those options, but as I see it, those are the two options. And I don't know if you guys see any other options.
We're not just checking in with planning board and saying, hey, information's incorrect. It's lot eight, not lot 10. Lot eight's commercial. Does that change your change your algebra any?
I don't think so.
No, because it's the it's the type of commercial use.
Yeah.
Right. It's not commercial or not commercial. It's permitted commercial use.
Right.
I personally think for them to make a honest and educated opinion on the entire thing, they need a lot more information than anything that we can provide them in that short period of time. So they catch them off guard and say, hey, you guys for this or against it? I have a strong feeling.
I don't really think they're off guard. They're well aware of the event.
And I but I don't think they know as much as you guys know and we know, is what I'm saying.
John, you want to weigh in?
I'll make a decision right now.
What would be your decision if we were to have it right now?
I'd say let's give them the permit.
Tony?
Apart from the legal question, I would say let's give them the permit.
Tyler?
I'm on the planning board, so I have to, you know.
Fair enough.
You're you're the selectman's rep to the planning board, so your your job is to represent this group to them.
Right.
So you you're not conflicted in any way. This is this is your primary job and that is your secondary job.
Well, I, okay, then I'll go back to my original thing. I voted, you know, for it. So, I mean, I've just again, I've been going to the planning board, you know, they're coming at me. That's why I mean, I thought desperately needed that we get together and try to say, hey, we've laid the groundwork for they for them to come into you if they want to continue next year. But that's it. That's.
How soon could we have advice from the attorney if we were to go that route?
I would feel better about the whole thing if we got a legal opinion first.
We have to come back and make a vote together.
Then I'm for that if that means we can have these folks move their event forward.
September 9th is the planning board.
All right. So does that sound fair enough, folks, where, you know, we're gonna go get legal advice?
On September 9th?
No.
No, no.
No, no.
That's just what I heard.
That's we now end the meeting on the 9th. We'll get a legal opinion and bring that to the planning board.
So for us to find out on September 9th and turn around and cancel to the people that we've.
Wait, were we saying that we would?
You just asked three of the planning board members and they all said for it. So.
Well, there's only one planning, one representative.
I mean, not planning. Sorry, I'm sorry. Select board. You basically just started the vote. You went halfway around the room. Half of them said yes, and then you stopped. So I don't want to turn this into an argument. I I'm just asking that you guys decide whether or not we can move forward with the last event without doing it without permission.
Well, this is the question we're weighing. Are we comfortable making, doing a formal vote on that? Even though, you know, a number of us are in principle in favor of it, there's that legal question hanging over our heads.
Ben, what you were.
About the legal issue.
Can I hang on a second? Ben, were you proposing that we get legal advice and then go to the planning board on the 9th? Or were you proposing that we get legal advice and that we can reconvene after we had that legal advice?
Recoveen after we have that legal advice.
So we could have a special meeting on Friday?
Yes.
Was what you were suggesting.
That's what I was suggesting, yes.
And I'm not saying Friday specifically. I'm just some at some day.
On whatever day it is.
Whatever day it is, so that that doesn't delay till the 9th.
Just to ensure that the board is dotting their i's and crossing their t's.
I understand that 1,000%, but you've asked us to do.
Just as just as Chris had pointed out, you know, the government, how it works, um, it I would feel better if we had some legal advice and we'll reconvene and make a decision at that point.
And I absolutely respect that. I'm not arguing it. I'm just saying that given what you guys are asking of us and then shortening the timeframe, it's just.
Well, at this point, is a couple of days gonna make that much of a difference?
A day makes a difference this day and age.
So I mean, we got the letter from the planning board today. So you're 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 doing the same thing to us. You're asking us to make a decision, you know.
Actually, you guys told us we could move forward with the three events this summer, but yeah, Caitlin's actually a prosecuting attorney, so she could speak for me.
Well, wait, wait. Hold on. I I would like to hear from more people from Nottingham.
Absolutely.
If they're not from Nottingham, I mean, excuse me just a minute. Then I don't I don't want to. I mean, I want to hear from Nottingham residents first. So.
I'm going to be very sure. I just was hoping that when you do ask for legal advice about your decision and what authority you have to make a decision about this event, I would just hope that despite what they find when they're looking at the rules and regulations that this board can follow and say that maybe making this choice would not be something typically that the board had authority to do. I think that it would just be important for the legal counsel to understand that this board maybe to make some sort of exception here because even though, you know, these decisions about these prior events so far were rushed and quick turnaround. Um, they were made by this board during these public meetings and we've relied on them. Um, and it could be to our detriment if we aren't able to move forward with the last event. And although maybe that wouldn't be the way that to go forward doing things from now on. Like we've said lots of times tonight, this is a learning experience. And I think that it would just be important for a legal counsel to understand that it's not like this is the first time you're making this decision. We can make a clean cut. This decision can be made or not, but that we have this sort of ongoing thing beforehand. And I'm sure they would understand that, but I just want to make sure that um, they know that. And that's all I wanted to make sure when it comes to that part of the decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else from Nottingham? I gentleman right there in the head. Okay.
I'd like to answer drone question, but I have a minute.
Uh, you'll have time. The man in the yellow shirt.
My name's Don McMarach. I'm from 85 Gallon Road. I've been in town since 71. I I agree that you should go to legal counsel. I also work with Steve. I'm on the boat. I pull him out. But, you know, this bit snowmobile club in Nottingham, I don't know if anyone's aware of that. Years ago, the snowmobile was big in this town. I used to ride to eighth grade on my snowmobile from Gallon Road.
Okay.
But it's all new and but I kind of agree that you should get legal advice.
Okay.
Attack there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead. Come on up, sir.
Fred Jackson, 129 Highland Avenue. I've been here for most of my 60 years on Pawtucket Lake. Um, as a crow flies, probably about the same distance that you are. Um, I find the noise just kind of white noise. I find it nothing like Memorial Day weekend or the two weeks surrounding July 4th where I'm getting fireworks at 2 o'clock in the morning or even Labor Day weekend. Um, I've been to the event. Uh, I find it incredibly well put together. There's no traffic. You drive by on 156, you don't even notice something going on down there. Unless you see somebody pulling with a trailer with snowmobiles on it. Um, so I don't. I just don't get any impact from the noise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe there was a lady in the back that.
Nottingham, Jack, I live at 25 Lincoln Drive in Nottingham. I've been a spectator for over 10 years, a photographer for seven years for the water cross. Um, I've brought my nephew, my family members, my mom, my dad, they all love it. Um, I understand noise ordinance in town. I've had a few problems with myself having, you know, a few parties, things like that. I get that. There's no ordinance. You really, and I try to be respectful of my neighbors. I was just had a few friends over sighting their guns in, let my neighbors know. They were like, all right, no problem. Just wanted to let you guys know as we shoot in the afternoon on Sunday. And they said, okay, great. No one was called, no problems. It was great. I've, you know, I've been here since '05. Um, I think you guys need to do whatever you need to legalize. I can't speak for you, obviously. I don't know what is involved with the planning board and everything else. Um, I'm a huge supporter of these guys, community, family. I've known them all for years. Um, and they have bent over backwards. And I know you guys have, you know, equally done some stuff for them, but I'd really like to see this go forward. Um, mostly because I want to bring my grandson to the last race. Um, but, um, yeah, that's it. I mean, I'm definitely for it. Um, I know a few of you guys, actually. I know Tyler. Our kids went to school together. I mean, I know like half the people in this room. And I know most of us are for it, so, um, I hope you guys end up proving it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from Nottingham?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Menard. I live at 166 Raymond Road. Um, I've been down there and there may have been 750 people, but not all at once. People are coming in, people are going out. So it may have been how many ticket sales they had, but when you go down there, it's not overcrowded. I mean, I see it's a family event. And in this day and age, we need something for the families to go to. And, you know, what they're doing for like the food pantry, donation for the food pantry, that's a plus since we lost the one at lyers. They're trying to do positive for our town. And instead of the few are, I don't even want to say complaints. I'm sorry to bring that up. But this is the whole thing. Other than noise, which we can't do anything about because there's no ordinance on it, we've never had this before. So nobody, we're all in this blind. We've never had to deal with anything like this. So there's no rulings at all. to deal with anything like this, so there's no rulings at all. So, this is going to be a learning curve for all of us, but it's a positive function going on, and our town needs positive because there's been enough negative. So, I truly believe that you should go forward and give them the permit, and, you know, contact your attorneys, but there's been no precedent set before now. Never happened before. So, what are they going to base it on? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anybody else from Nottingham? Sir, you're not from Nottingham, but you're welcome to speak now.
Thank you. My name is Dave Pino, and I work for Tammy during the event, and I'd like to answer Mr. Mormon's question about hypothetically, what if something happened? Most of the volunteers that work for Tammy, okay, are veterans. Veterans look at this as a very highly thing. I have had five years' training in the United States Army as a military policeman. I'm in charge of some of the security, parking cars, whatnot and so forth. There's a couple of veterans back there that have different MOSs. We've all been well equipped with, you know, safety hazards and whatnot and so forth. We're not just a bunch of guys out there just trying to do something, and we volunteered to help Tammy. So, in case something happens, we do have a little bit of training that maybe can help things down. We're just not a bunch of guys out there drinking beer. Thanks.
Thank you. Last one.
Again, Lee Weldy, 110 Nottingham Road. Two things of procedure tonight that I'll bring up. You guys started a vote. You had three votes on your board. No one made an amendment or made a motion.
That was a poll, not a vote. There was no motion made to take a vote.
You guys were voting, but, okay, we'll go with that. You guys started a vote and you were in favor of it. So, with that, you then said the planning board. This event has been going on for two months, and you talked about being rushed. You got a letter today. Now you want to really want to talk about being rushed? You've brought it up at the planning board meeting. It's been discussed. They came here tonight for the permit, expecting that, you know, the discussions had been had at the planning board and if any other questions needed to be addressed. At that point, I believe the planning board should have said that they should have sought legal counsel, not you guys, for the event. So, again, I saw three to two, or three, two you hadn't voted yet, and then you moved for legal counsel, then, and at that point, things start to proceeding. So, the planning board, if they had felt that they had precedence over this situation, they should have said on how many meetings have been since the first event, they should have addressed it at the meeting after your first event, because they knew there were two more coming up. So, to rush it, now you're going to delay these people that much longer, waiting for a legal counsel, who knows how long it's going to be, because I can tell you with the state being shut down and, you know, the New Hampshire Municipal Association trying to get through to them. I know how hot it is even when they're open sometimes to get a call back. So, I think that you're not doing them a just, you're not doing them just service by holding the permit till you talk to the planning board, and then the planning board's going to seek counsel. You're probably going to give them the approval the Thursday before the event, and it might as well happen. So, I think you need, I think you need to issue the permit or vote on, finish the vote on the permit and go forward.
Okay. What I was proposing, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Lee Weldy. Like I said, I live right across the street on the last house before you hit Nottingham.
Okay. What we're proposing, or what I was suggesting, is that we seek legal counsel and then reconvene, whether that's on a Friday or Thursday after receiving that, and making a decision at that point. We weren't saying that the board, the planning board, go get legal advice. We're talking about the board.
I understand you were looking for legal counsel.
We're the ones approving this permit.
Yep.
Okay, and I want to ensure, as I mentioned already, that we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and we're all above board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As someone pointed out earlier, we don't need to be into a legal matter, a lawsuit, whether it's the planning board or a resident of a town, you know, bringing a lawsuit against the town. And that's the last thing we really want to, we want to try to avoid that as much as possible. But also, you know, I'm pretty sure I can speak for everybody here. We are generally in support of the event. We just want to make sure that we are going to be doing things the legal ways. So, if you could just give us a couple of days to speak to legal counsel, we'll reconvene later this week and go from there.
How will you notify the abutters that are here tonight that that's going to happen so we can come back?
All meetings are posted. They're posted on the website. They're posted...
My point?
On the door.
You, this was posted, this event, this was posted, and you got a letter the same day of the event. Planning board probably should have had representation, or the chairman should have been here to address these issues.
Could have.
Okay, so you posted this, I'm sure legally, in three, in two places, plus online.
So, I'm sorry, I'm missing your point on that.
He's not here.
Oh, I know, but I'm a planning board member.
Yeah, but I'm saying the chairman of the planning board should have been here to address these issues with the concerns, no different than, no different than the residents or the abutters.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question to the planning board? What, do I have to go there?
Yep.
What makes an event, an event just charging people to come in?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
What makes it an event, just charging spectators?
I think their whole thing is the land use.
I'm just asking, what makes it an event?
What puts you here for the license that we've talked about all along is RSA 286 colon one, which says that no showman, tumbler, rope dancer, ventriloquist, or other person shall for pay exhibit any feats of agility, horsemanship, sleight of hand, rope dancing, or feats with cards, or any animals, wax figures, puppets, or other show, or promote any public competition without license from the select.
From who?
From, the license comes from the selectman of the town.
Okay.
So that's, that's what puts you here.
Okay.
There's a whole body of other regulations in the zoning ordinance that will speak to the land use question.
Okay, so if there was a totally free...
Got none.
Totally free, come hang out?
If it wasn't a competition and it wasn't for pay, then we could have a conversation about whether it needed a license or not.
That depends on practice.
So if it's totally free?
Well, it's no different than Lyers. They get trophies and they pay.
I'm just...
You've set precedent to allow Lyers to run here.
Now that you've established what it is, and that it's competition with heats and all that stuff, we're not going to believe that, from an enforcement point of view, we're not going to believe that suddenly it isn't a competition.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying if it's totally free, is it still considered?
It's the competition angle. It's two things. It's pay and competition. As we read the statute.
Okay.
Pay and competition, it makes it subject to a license.
I'd really, and I'll just end it with this. I'd really appreciate a permit tonight, but like you said, you guys are asking for time. We're asking for time too. So, whatever you guys have to decide is what you have to decide. But, I was told at the beginning of this that we move forward with these three events, and we have to go before the planning board and ask for future permission.
Chris speaks, you know, on our behalf, and on the town's behalf to the attorney all the time. It's not like he's going to call the attorney and then 10 days from now the guy's going to call him back. He's going to tell him this is important. He'll probably get back to him in the same day, I would imagine.
I'm just speaking from 26 select meetings in another town, and we never went racing. That's wrong. That's the only experience I have besides these two previous. But I appreciate you guys, this time. Your job, it's not easy. I understand where you're coming from. You have a lot of the town for it, and I don't think anybody in this building tonight is against it. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Did we ever ask, is there anybody here against it tonight? There. Doesn't look like there is, but I'll ask. Is there anybody here that's against it?
And that wants to speak.
Okay, so...
You've heard, we've heard complaints. You've seen everything we've heard, so.
It's called stacking the meaning.
Yeah.
You know what we're hearing.
Okay, so that ends the discussion on this. We will...
So, Chris, you'll attend to reach the attorney tomorrow and let us know.
Yep.
We're going to vote or make a decision whether that's the action we want to go with? Because we didn't, this is an open discussion.
Fair enough.
Part of the things we had, the thing is which way we want to go and make a vote on that.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
Okay, folks, so we want to have a discussion on getting advice from the attorney. Is that what you're saying?
Well, when we first started, there was an idea of we were either going to say, do we want to make a decision tonight on this, and that's going to take a vote, or do we want to make a decision, do we see the attorney first? Both of those things we're going to come down to which way we want to vote. So, if you're going to ask the board, I believe you should be asking the board, do we have a motion to, or something to say, we're going to see the attorney in that pending approval of what the attorney says, which I don't like that, you know, or do we just vote for right now? I mean, we should have a sense of that's how we want to go.
I don't think we need to vote on whether or not we consult the attorney first.
Well, somebody, I think the way to do it is if somebody feels strongly, they make a motion for the board. You make a motion for the board to approve or deny, right? That, I mean, it comes down to that.
Yeah, well, I'll step up and make a motion that we approve the application. For Tammy, I'm going to mess up your last name, for the event, you know, held for September 27th, 28th.
26th.
Sorry, 26th, 27th. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I'm looking at the old one, so.
Do you have a second? Table that one. Good enough. Okay, we have an answer.
So, Chris, the fundamental question of the attorney is, does RSA 280, was it 286 colon one?
No, our fundamental legal questions are about, more about zoning and the enforcement of the zoning ordinance.
Well...
You're going to have to, you're going to have to approve a license regardless of what the zoning ordinance is. This could be a parallel approval process in the future, where you have site plan approval, and then if...
Presumably, there'd be more clarity with the planning board or discussion with the planning board.
Yeah, there would be some permanent structure in place.
So, our authority under 286-1 doesn't trump planning board requirements?
No. Your questions are, are you going too far in light of your zoning ordinance?
Okay.
Not, are you going too far in light of the rope throwers and knife chuckers or whatever that statute is?
Rope dancing and synchronized swimming.
You're clean on that. That was...
There's no rope dancing.
Rope dancing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
When this first appeared, I talked with counsel, and I said, this just came out of nowhere. What, I feel like I don't have anything to use, and he pointed me to that statute. So, that's where you got involved to begin with. That's clear. Your authority there is very clear, and it's what we've used for the prior two licenses, and there's not really any question about that. It's all about what is, what is the enforcement in the zoning world have to be.
Okay.
Are we also, are we looking for, like we're calling it, this, what we're going through now, we had said this would be a one-time event, and it was going to be for the summer of 2020.
Yeah, that was, that was an interpretation made by our code enforcement people that said, and we asked you, we said, hey, do you want to treat it like this?
Yeah, yeah.
That was, that was the stretch, and I'll talk with counsel about that too.
And ask him about a one-time series of events, because that's really what it boils down to. One time literally means one time, one day. I mean, I would think. So, you know, where does it cross the line into literally changing the use of the land, which I...
I'm totally not sure what we're asking the legal advice now. I just heard five different questions.
That's why we pay our lawyers the big bucks, to sort through all those questions.
You guys are asking us for a couple of days, but you don't even know what you're going to ask for legal people.
We're good on that.
No, we're just, we're just chewing on the questions that we have. Chris already knows what, what to bring to the lawyer. It boils down to the fundamental question, have we overstepped our bounds in light of our zoning regulations? That's the main question. Okay. But me thinking about it myself, my questions would be a little more, you know, granular about those different topics that I brought up.
Tony thinks out loud.
I do. I think out loud. I talk with my hands. It's a French thing. It's a French thing.
Okay, so...
Let's move on.
We're going to move on now. Review action items for next meeting. We've got a lot, I guess.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Non-public under A is the last...
I got one thing I want to raise.
Cut a glimpse of Gunnar, by chance?
No, I haven't.
Maybe just steering clear of this mess.
You would be smart to.
Actually, I get it.
The town has actually had quite a few of these events. So, this does go to planning, I'd likely do.
Did you go to it?
Remember the golf tournaments that happened on the lake?
No, I was hoping to go to...
That is another, same as this.
You're...
Parking issues, I mean...
You're right.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right.
You know the parking issues.
Took care of them, but, yeah, I get them all. No, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. Hundred percent.
As long as, whatever we decide, whatever we do, it's just got to be equitable.
We just got to be consistent. We got to be acting from a position of knowledge.
Yep.
So, Ben, can I bring up one thing before we do that?
Absolutely.
Um...
And I got one thing after her.
So, everybody's favorite, everybody's favorite topic, emergency lanes. I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping on that, because when we had a big public meeting back in December, a motion was made and approved that we would continue to maintain the roads as is until September 2020, with the notion that we would work towards a revised policy for the emergency lanes by March, end of March, right?
Yeah.
Now, different things have transpired since then. There is the legal situation. What I want to clarify is, you know, my belief, and I could be wrong, is that the town will continue to, that we're not going to adhere to a September cutoff, and that the town will continue to maintain the roads as is, as we work through the legal processes.
So, my understanding, and I would support this, is that we will not change anything until the decision has been made in regards to this court case. However, I am not in favor of working on any new road standards at all until we have a decision from the court.
I will agree with that right there. I don't think the subject should come up on road standards.
Nope. I think that until this is settled in court, I, we should just leave the road standards alone until we have a decision from the courts.
I'd rather focus on the property and the money that could be made over on Route 4.
Again, I would want input from the other two members. Donna, I've heard from you. John, I've heard from you.
Yeah, I'd expect everything would be like frozen status quo pending the outcome of the litigation, so.
Yeah. Okay, so no, no new reworking of standards or anything like that until...
Frozen.
Okay.
Across the board.
But continue the status quo in regards to the roads.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we discussed that publicly and that it was a matter of record.
Yeah, I would think that if we changed something midstream while litigation was going on, it would put, put the town in a bad light.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you just should leave room for the possibility that something else changes, the situation changes somehow, where, I can't imagine what it would be, but conditions change, so just leave yourself that opening.
Yeah. Fair enough. Was that it, Donna?
Yeah, that's all. And again, I just wanted to make sure that we all acknowledge that.
Yep, fair enough. Thank you.
Publicly.
Thank you for bringing that up. Tony, you have one?
Yeah, recycling center. I was there over the weekend, and Brianna was pointing out that the outdoor collection of the paper and cardboard, you know, even with the lid propped up, the rainwater is getting into that dumpster and ruining it, and the company, and we're also paying for that dumpster to be hauled away because we're not bailing it, whereas if we bail it, we get 4250 per bail. So, we're losing money by not bringing it into the building to bail it, and then we're paying money on top of that to have the dumpster full of soggy cardboard taken away. So...
We decided not to bail it because there was something wrong with the bailer, right? And the COVID and all that? And the COVID and all that?
Well, they've already returned to indoor operation for some plastics and milk jugs and I think the aluminum cans, something.
You can walk in and dump your glass.
There's, yeah, a glass, maybe that was the other thing. So, I mean, they're already making it work with those few items. I, you know, the question is, can we move the cardboard back inside so we can restore that little bit of revenue that we were getting? So...
I would leave that up to...
I, you know, that might be a question for Sean.
The last thinking that we had, yes, we want to get back to it, it's, we're down to the point now where cardboard and paper don't really make much at all, so it's not a big, this is not a big financial decision one way or the other. Hauling costs are now a bigger factor for us than any material benefit of all this stuff. The last conversation that Sean and I had about paper in particular was, we don't want to flip-flop back and forth with how we're handling these various materials because educating the public, and, you know, changing, changing there is harder than changing anything in town. You know, everybody uses it, or almost everybody uses it, and everybody gets in a groove, and when you, when you tinker with things there, it's hard to, it's hard to untinker. So, we said, and I think we talked about it in probably early August, yeah, it's costing us a little bit of money, but we don't know what the, what's the fall going to look like in terms of our ability to do anything. So, we said, short money, let's not bounce around on this. You know, so that's, that's where we left it. We're trying to be deliberate in, in going back to the way that we've done things, you know, and doing, doing it very deliberately, not just like willy-nilly, okay, let's, you know, COVID's over. And we, and frankly, we want, we want six months of, of data on this, in this new market, to see what's worth really doing.
Right.
You know, I would be surprised, we haven't, we haven't looked at the numbers too much yet, because we, you know, given the lag and how the expenses and the revenues come in on this thing, we've only got a few months' worth of data, but I'd be surprised if we ever went back to crushing cans. It's, you know, just the added revenue that you get versus the ease of not touching every aluminum can that, you know, we'd love to do a real serious look at those, those major categories and say, well, okay, paper, it's worth the time and energy to bail it, you know, all that. So, in the short term, yeah, it would save us a few bucks, make us a few bucks, yes. But that was the last conversation we had about it, we'll continue to have those conversations. But we're making, what, 30 grand a year selling recycled materials, and we're spending 80 grand a year throwing away trash and paying 50 grand in payroll. We spend more in payroll than we do, you know, and payroll's a bigger number driving things up there than how much we get for it.
And I'll put this out to everybody, might not be a favorable thing, but I don't think we should be giving dump stickers away for free. I think everybody should pay an annual fee to use the dump. Do you ever want to put that up for discussion?
Hope.
Okay?
Nope. Okay.
I got one thing to do, real quick, though. Just had a question. Somebody has a, if they have a pothole on a town road in the neighborhood, who do they go to?
Call the office.
Call the office, okay.
Yeah, we, highway's not really reachable because we're out on the road, but we connect people with highway all the time.
That's it.
Okay. Anything else? So, I guess we're ready to go into non-public.
What letter is it?
A.
I make a motion, we go into non-public for RSA 91- A:32A.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor? I've been Bartlett.
I've done it, Danus.
I've Tony Dumas.
I've Tyler Eden.
I, John Morin.
Who's second?
Me. The tonester.
Okay, we are now entering into non-public. Thank you, Nottingham, good night.